My name is Robert Pamm. I am the chair of the Amherst Democratic Town Committee. We are hosting this because this is, I think, one of the most significant things that this town will be voting on for the next probably five or 10 years. We are pleased to have representatives of both sides of the question, should there be a new charter for Amherst. I will introduce the people who are speaking. Johanna Newman, Mandy Jo Hanke, Jerry Weiss, and Meg Gage. The charter will be voted on on March 27. What happens on that date will determine whether the town meeting will continue, whether the select board will continue, or whether in place of that, there will be instead a town council consisting of 13 members. Thirteen members would be elected on a two-year basis. Those people would be elected in five districts with two representatives each and three town-wide. One minor change would be that this town would no longer be a town, it would be called a city. I am going to be organizing this in the following manner. There will be a 10-minute speech, or presentation rather, by a person from one side, and it will start with those who are opposed to --
No, no, no.
I'm sorry?
They won the flip, but they chose to go second.
They chose to go second.
I chose to go second.
Okay, sorry.
Tails.
So, as I was saying, we will begin with those who are supporting the charter, and then 10 minutes later, we will be followed by a representative of those opposed to the charter. We will then go back and forth so that both representatives will have a chance to speak. I have prepared some questions, if there are things that they have not covered that I think ought to be, and then there will be lots of time for people to ask questions. Is there any question about what I've said, or what we're doing? No? Okay. Then, I'm going to turn this over to Johanna.
Excellent.
Bob?
May I have one? Thank you. Excellent. Well, first of all, I want to thank Bob and the committee for organizing tonight's forum. I think it's the first of many public forums that we'll have over the campaign season, and, you know, I'm just, I'm thrilled to be here having a robust debate with my fellow citizens about this issue. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Johanna Newman, and I am the chair of the Amherst for All campaign, which is the citizens' campaign that is working to educate voters about the benefits of the charter and then get out the vote on March 27. I did not serve on the Charter Commission, nor am I a member of town meeting. I want to just share with you first my personal story, then cover a little bit of historical context, and then talk about some of the key attributes of the charter as I see them. So let me first just share a little bit of myself. My husband grew up in Leverett. I was born in Germany, moved to this country when I was seven years old. And when Nick and I first started dating, I often marveled when we came to Amherst. I noticed how our community has benefited from, you know, decades of thoughtful engagement by citizens, from protecting open space to creating a wonderful theater downtown. You know, this is a wonderful, vibrant place to live. Despite that, when we moved here, my husband urged me to steer clear of politics in this town, saying it was a hornet's nest. And I work, so my career, I work full-time, and I am a full-time organizer and advocate to protect our environment. I work with Environment Massachusetts and Environment America, as well as the Federation of State Perks, and, you know, I've done that kind of work for 16 years, taking on developers, fighting for clean energy, protecting open spaces. And so, you know, we face tremendous challenges at the national level on that work, and so, you know, I felt like I had meaningful work to do at the national and the state level, so, well, it's not hard to follow Nick's advice, to just kind of steer clear of local level stuff. But recently, I have felt compelled to get engaged, because this is my home, and I'm raising my children here, and I really love this town and wanted to continue to thrive. So, I'd like to start by just providing a little bit of historical context as I see it, because I think it's beneficial. In its 259-year history, the town of Amherst has updated its form of government twice. The first time was in 1938, which was a long time ago, 80 years. And it was at that point that we moved from an open town meeting to a representative town meeting, like we have now. In 1954, we updated our charter again to incorporate the role of a professional town manager. And since then, you know, we've been operating under our current status quo charter. Since we moved to representative town meeting, the population of Amherst has grown sixfold, and our budget has grown eightfold. We live in a much larger town and a much more complex town than we were in 1938, and we are definitely much more diverse demographically. So, it is my belief that our town has outgrown occasional government, and let me explain a little bit of why. At first, the first reason is that I believe our status quo fails to adequately empower voters. And let me make the case for why I believe that is the case, and then explain how the proposed charter addresses those shortcomings. And, you know, when you look in this room, or, you know, when you kind of think about Amherst from a distance, you'd say, "The last thing we need is empowered voters," right? This is Amherst, like only the H is silent. We have a robust kind of public discourse in this town, but it is worth looking under the hood of how well voters are empowered in this town. When I was in grade school, after I moved here from Germany, and I first learned the principles of democracy, one of the core principles was "one person, one vote." That's how we're taught democracy is supposed to work, and that candidates should compete to win our votes by revealing their vision, their credentials, and their capabilities. And then we, the people, get to decide who represents us. Now, I recognize that New England has a slightly different tradition when it comes to democracy with its open town meeting, where every voter in town can make their voice heard. But as I mentioned earlier, Amherst moved away from that open town meeting model 80 years ago, and the size of our town wouldn't even allow us, under state law, to return to that open meeting model. And our current model of representative town meeting, I think, is built on the premise that town meeting members don't necessarily respond to input from their constituents, but that they are instead a representative sample of the population of the town. Unfortunately, Amherst's representative town meeting falls far short of the diverse town that Amherst is today. Research has consistently shown that town meeting is whiter, wealthier, and older than both the general public and the voting population in Amherst. And if people are interested in those exact figures, I'm happy to provide them. So, if it's not representative from like the representative sample point of view, let's look at the other side of democracy, the idea that candidates should compete to win our votes by revealing their vision, their credentials, and their capabilities, and then we, the people, decide who represents us. Under our current model, there is little to no competition for seats, little to no revelation of vision, credentials, or capabilities in town meeting races. In fact, in the last 11 local elections, there has been an average of only 13% more candidates than seats to be filled. In that time period, from 2007 to 2017, the average number of town meeting seats was 106, and the average number of people running was 120. So out of 106 people, were basically guaranteed a seat on our legislative body. And since there's little to no discussion of the issues beforehand, and little to no campaigning on the part of town meeting members, voters often end up just picking the name that they recognize, or the street that they recognize. And from 2007 until 2015, 96% of the incumbents who ran for town meeting were reelected. And, you know, like me, I think there are a lot of people in Amherst who faced with little to no choices and really busy lives. We have increasingly opted out of local elections. In the last six elections, where there wasn't a special question on the ballot, the average voter participation rate in Amherst was a meager 10.6% in local town elections. So, I think all of those are problems in our democracy. And let's say hypothetically, you're an engaged citizen, and you were to try to attempt to contact your town meeting member under the current system, to try to get them to represent you. You would find that you would struggle to do so. Townwide, only 68% of town meeting members have opted into our email system, where constituents can communicate with their elected officials. And, you know, as somebody who's tried to phone-bank and contact all 24 of my town meeting members, I can tell you, there are way better ways I can spend three hours of my time. It is prohibitive in terms of engagement. So, I think there is a very real issue with everyday voters not being empowered in our democracy, and the proposed charter addresses this in really deep, profound ways. First, each voter will have five representatives on the council, two who represent you at large, or, sorry, three at large, and two who represent your district. There will be district meetings, institutionalized every six months, where neighbors can make their concerns heard to their town council member. With fewer seats, there's real possibility of competition and real debates about the issues that are before us. Town elections will actually take place on Election Day, the second Tuesday in November. We'll have ranked choice voting in Amherst, which will allow every voter in this town to vote their conscience without throwing their vote away. We'll have annual public meetings on the master plan, on our schools, and on the budget. And there'll be a community engagement officer whose sole job it is, well, unless they have other responsibilities in town, but whose job it is to bring more diverse constituencies into the conversation, so they know how to engage with their town. All right, I think I am out of time, so I will, I'm happy to talk more about how I think this charter will also bring thoughtful spending and planning to our town, and how I believe this charter also keeps what works in our town, in particular, the role of the professional town manager, and all the dozens of citizen committees in our town that allow everyday voters to help craft policy and practice, to make sure that Amherst stays a great place. With that, I want to just say that we have a fact sheet from Amherst for All on the back table in this corner. If, coming out of tonight, you feel like, "Man, I plan on voting yes," please fill out one of the pledge forms and then bring it to me, so we don't have to expend resources trying to persuade you anymore. And if you want more information, there's a great blog called A Better Amherst that the former editor of the Bulletin has written, his name is Nick Grabey, and he has really dug into a lot of the issues that are in this weighty decision.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Sorry to run long.
Are we going to have time for closing comments? Are we going to have closing comments, or is this it? I'm just curious.
Well, we'll do this 10 minutes each, and then we'll come around.
Okay, I mean, at the end after the whole, I'll take that.
And there will be no question time, or is this just us speaking?
Do you hear me, that mic?
Okay, let me go over again the way we're playing this. Let me go over this one more time. People take --
The mic is off. It's off now. We need to do, learn about the mic. Close to the mic.
Can everybody hear me now? Okay. The rules of engagement are fairly straightforward. There's a 10 minutes for speaker from side one, 10 minutes for speaker from side two, then going back to the other speaker on each of these sides. Following that, I will be asking some questions about issues that may not have been addressed. There will be, at that point, plenty of opportunity for each of you to ask questions. We will try to do this as organized as we can. They may get a two-minute summary at the end if they would like, but, you know, we do have to be out of here before nine and with the chairs put away, so there is a limit on how far we can go.
Thank you, Bob. I'm Meg Gage. I was a member of the Charter Commission, and I'm going to stand also, because there are people way back there, but I have a whole lot of papers, so I hope that works out. Thanks so much to the Amherst towns for organizing this debate. You might have a whole bunch of new prospective members here after this. I really appreciate so much the chance to begin a conversation with Amherst voters and residents about the charter and the new government it seeks for Amherst. And I'm delighted to be with my old pal, Mandy, and Johanna.
My old pal, too.
Johanna and I both worked hard on the school campaign. I was a school supporter, and I'm a charter opponent, and I would love to talk about that issue, but that's not what I'm choosing to speak about. If you want to ask me about it, I'd be glad to speak about that. But we worked hard together to try to win this proposed new configuration of the schools. But I'm really opposed to this charter, and I'm here to beg you to look at the charter carefully, really read it. And I'm going to focus on one area only, even though there are four or five really important areas to focus on, I'm going to focus on one area and go more deeply into that. But really do look at the, first of all, I want to thank the Bulletin for its strong endorsement today of calling for a robust and thoughtful debate. That was great news. Scott, you should pass it on. Everybody's, so we have a little round of applause for the Bulletin. I want to go back. The Bulletin is very responsive, and they're going to either think this is a cool topic or not, depending on how much pressure we put on them, and Scott's on our side on that one, so, thank you very much. Indeed, the charter proposal would bring a complete change of our form of government, and have impacts on many levels, indirectly and indirectly, on pretty much everyone in town. As I said, there's too much to talk about in 10 minutes, and I hope we'll have lots of other opportunities, so I'm going to focus on only one thing, which is the lack of checks and balances in the creation of the council, the elimination of town meeting, and the, and look at it with four particular examples of, it's not just a matter of not having town meeting and not having a mayor, but there's some other ways that the council, as presented, when you look at the fine print, really concentrates power. And there's a chart up here that's fabulous, that I'm not, don't have time to go into, but I invite people to come up and look at it. The top is what we have now, and the voters, of course, vote, and this is what's proposed. It's very controversial, but so is this whole topic. The concept of checks and balances is kind of the hallmark of democratic governance worldwide, and that's why this is so important. Having the inability of any one body to be able to hijack government for special interest or for particular purpose. Checks and balances, if you go to any part of the world, one of them, you'd measure democratic progress. That's the hallmark that people use, the benchmark. So I'm going to focus on four particular ways that power is concentrated in the hands of the council. So, first of all, the council has the ability to intervene in the school and the library in new ways that the select board and the manager have not had before. The council, at any time, can ask the superintendent going around the school committee, or the library director going around the elected library trustees for any information whatsoever, and can call them in to testify. It's really like the ability to carry out a private investigation without working with the school committee or the elected library board. And that's really undermining the voters, because that's one of the ways that we have, you know, the one thing in the charter, the con theory, is that the check on everything is the voter. Just keep that in mind. The check is the powerful voter who turns people out, but if you've elected the school committee and the library board, and the council can call in the heads of those two agencies, and, so if you want to look that up, it's 2.8D, right here. This is what you should get used to, looking at the fine print. But I'm not going to read it, but I just basically summarized it. The second way the council has huge concentrated power is that the check that the voters have in the voter box is really weak. Our team has a research, our research team has looked into all 10 of the council manager forms of towns in this state, as well as 42 cities with a mayor-manager, and three with a mayor, council, and a manager. The research, which we can make available, reflects overwhelming number of uncontested elections, and the power of incumbency with campaign contributions playing a large role in who wins. And of course, voters who are unhappy with an Amherst councillor's vote on a particular matter, by the time the election comes around, even if you're able to kick them out, which is unlikely, the policy you didn't like is probably implemented. The zoning law has happened, the building is built, whatever it is. Two years is a long time to hold someone accountable. I'd add parenthetically that the overwhelming majority of Massachusetts, same research shows, Massachusetts councillors are white and male. Incumbent candidates are almost never defeated, and in all other municipalities, there's no evidence that the ballot or the fear of voter retribution promotes accountability.
Got to drink some water. Thanks for the water, Bob.
Thanks for the water, Bob. Four. The, how many, what does that say?
Five.
Five, cool. The vote, one of the ways that the council is checked in the charter is through the voter veto. So this gets a little weedy, but I think I can explain it simply. First of all, there are two ways of counting registered voters, all registered voters and active registered voters. All registered voters is everybody who's registered to vote, whether they're dead or moved or graduated from college, or registered so they can vote for the president and aren't planning to vote again, so it's a much higher number. So for the voter veto, which you can find in the charter, voters can put something on the ballot and veto a policy. There are three ways that the charter undermines the veto compared with what we have now with the referendum process. First of all, now, so this is the, in order for, as you remember from a school vote last March, not only did we have to win, or lose, depending on which side you're on, a certain number of voters had to participate in order for the vote to count. So what we have now is 18% of active registered voters, the smaller number, have to participate. What the charter proposes, it would be 20%, and it would be all registered voters. So in that election, last March, it would have meant, instead of needing to get 2,983 votes, we would have had to get 4,411, unheard of, in a off-year, off-election type of vote like that. Those are two things. The third, ready? The council can schedule the election whenever it wants. How about January 3rd, when people aren't around? So the vote is seen as the balance over here, this blank space, but the vote is really undermined in this charter in serious ways. And again, you can read all about that. I'm looking for how many minutes. Four. The manager. The concept of a council manager is kind of like a board of directors and a CEO, and I'm very happy with the manager, as is Johanna. I think for a place like Amherst, it's more important to have a professional who's trained, who's hired on their credentials, rather than a political person who could be in and out every two years. We need long-range planning, we need long-range leadership. But the concept is someone who's like a CEO, not somebody who's just an administrator. And this charter weakens the manager in ways, makes the manager weaker than the manager is right now. For example, the manager can't hire her or his own department heads without the council agreeing to it. It's written in a different way. It's written that the manager hires the council heads unless they're rejected by the council. Same thing. So, those are the four particular examples of concentration of power that I want to draw your attention to. The proposed charter creates a super body of 13 individuals, replacing five select board members and 240 town meeting members with virtually no effect, no effective check on their concentrated power. I just want to make two other quick points. Amherst faces two huge challenges. I chose not to spend my time on those two things, but I'll briefly tell you what they are. One of them, the charter doesn't address it all, and the other one, the charter exacerbates. The first is we need to start getting creative about our relationship with the university. They're going through huge change, and we're not in charge. It's an opportunity for us. It's absolutely fine for people to make a lot of money. They should, it's their job. But we need to intervene and create a creative ways, like we did with Amherst Cinema, that was for-profit, not-for-profit, government, town, working together. The second is Ranker. This charter will make it worse. Guaranteed, we will have more Ranker, whoever wins or loses after this charter, and that's tearing us apart.
This is an amazing turnout. As Bob said, I'm Mandy Jo Hanke, and I served on the Charter Commission for 18 months, doing my best to come up with a charter that I think will make this town's government work for all the voters in town. I'd like to talk a little bit about a few reasons why I believe that, and then I will actually respond to some of the comments Meg made. For me, this charter brings thoughtful decision-making, real deliberation to our body that actually acts. Right now, it doesn't, and I'll explain more later. It brings input to the legislative process at the correct time, instead of too late, and it brings year-round governing with officials who can connect the dots between the global outlook in the town to the small or large items they'll be dealing with in policies and in bylaws and in budgets. And it brings meaningful participation at a level that every person that wants to participate can actually participate at. It brings that participation to where they are. So let's go back to thoughtful decision-making. A council of 13 can talk to each other, can go back and forth with a debate, can bring items in a council back to the body that brought it to them, or to themselves, take the time they need to ask the questions they need, to get the answers they need, to make a decision. That is not something that we have in this town in the legislative body that actually acts. Right now, we have a body, the select board, that has that ability. Five members, they can talk all they want, they can ask questions, they can bring in town officials to do the investigating that they need, to get the answers they need. They can correct any information that is brought if it doesn't sound right, they can go back and say, "Hey, was that right?" But they can't act. They can't institute that bylaw. They can't actually pass the budget. The body that does that is town meeting. Town meeting cannot deliberate. People may say it can, but it can't. Every person that speaks at town meeting speaks to the moderator, they don't speak to anyone else, they can't have a back-and-forth conversation with anyone else. They cannot, they can ask questions, but there's no guarantee those questions will be answered. And in town meeting, that decision needs made that night, even if an amendment is on the floor. That decision needs made that night. They can't postpone it until they get the information they need, until the members that are voting get the information they need. This charter will allow the body that has the ability to deliberate and talk about the matters and figure out what the right answer is, to actually vote on that answer. Input at the right time. This may sound weird, but the charter, I believe, brings the input to the right time. Going back to that deliberation, right now, a lot of things don't hit most people's radar. We have 37,000 residents, until it hits town meeting. But as I said, once it's a town meeting, that's the night it's voted on. No matter whether the people who are voting on it have heard from others in town as to what they think and what they want, whether there's an amendment that maybe needs a little more -- whether there's an amendment that maybe needs a little more thought. Sometimes you can't even amend it at town meeting because the moderator deems that amendment not in scope. So you can't even do a thoughtful amendment sometimes. The charter will put that input back where it belongs before something is final or nearly final. It will have district meetings, it will have forums, where you're discussing the budget before the budget is drawn up, where you're discussing planning before the planning, zoning articles are drawn up. If it makes it to council and somehow it's avoided public, you know, thoughtfulness before then, the council will have time to actually think and act. It cannot act the night it takes up a bylaw article. It needs two votes, two different meetings, to actually enact something that's in the charter. And one councillor can postpone that to yet a third meeting. And a number of councillors could postpone that even further to a fourth meeting. The council will have the ability to take the time to, if something comes up, if an amendment comes up, say, hey, we need more input. We need to hear from our residents. And we need them to be able to tell us what should be modified. Year-round governing that connects the dots. Town meeting meets twice a year with multiple sessions each time. It's the way it was designed to work. But the way it was designed to work was not to have necessarily the members that are voting on those articles engaged in town politics year-round. This is not a condemnation of any one particular individual that serves on town meeting. It's the system as designed to come together and vote on a budget, even though you didn't follow the budget process for the whole year. You still get to vote on it. Having a legislative body that meets year-round, that can bring in the town manager, can ask department heads to come in, can ask staff members to come in and say, hey, I heard you talked about this three months ago or a month ago at a meeting, and we haven't heard any update, what's going on. Will give that body the knowledge and the global knowledge they need to act and act responsibly, not just responsibly, but in a way that considers the entire town, the global outlook. This budget amendment, how does it affect the other departments in town? This capital project that just was brought to us by citizens, how does that affect the rest of the capital projects that are already in the pipeline? How does it affect, you know, that capital project that might have been in the pipeline? A council that is in and involved year-round has the ability to connect all those dots and ask those questions because they'll know what questions to ask. Right now, through no fault of any town meeting member, it's the system that is flawed. The town meeting doesn't have that ability. They can't bring in heads and force heads of the town departments to come in and talk to them. They don't have that ability. They, they, they're not kept up on stuff unless they do it individually, but then they're not even guaranteed to be able to speak at town meeting. The last point I want to make as to why I'm supporting this charter is meaningful participation for everyone. And Johanna started to speak on this a little bit. But we have a government right now that, in order to really have meaningful participation, you've got to serve in town meeting or you've got to serve on a board or committee. You've got to spend 30, 40 hours a year, sometimes tucked into one month of work to be able to feel, to have that, that say. Voters don't really have meaningful participation in a local government. That's a shame. And they don't because there aren't competitive elections, there aren't representatives that feel that they actually have to reflect the views of the people that cannot vote, that might want to vote. We had, I know a school issue was contentious last year. 240 people got to vote on that in town meeting, and only 240 people. But there were probably 500 people in that room that would have loved to vote. But those other 250 did not have a vote. And there were people in the room that did have a vote that didn't think they had to listen to the ones that didn't have a vote. The ones that don't have a vote in town meeting don't feel like, in this town, that they actually have a voice. The charter will bring that participation at whatever level they want, emailing representatives, voting to the level that they feel comfortable with, and make it meaningful. Now to talk about some of the things Meg talked about in my last few minutes. First of all, she was a little bit inaccurate with the voter veto, so I would like to correct that. The current charter requires 18% of active voters to vote in favor, not 18% show up and vote. The proposed charter requires 20% to show up, of registered voters to show up and vote. To give you an idea of the difference, it's not what you said, Meg. To give you an idea of the difference, the 18% margin was not met at the last voter referenda on the schools. But because not 18% active voters didn't show up to vote, yes. But the 20% registered voters' numbers was met. So this charter would have met that 20% number. Makes it a little easier for the voters to overturn a council action than the current charter. Lack of check, but checks and balances. Right now, town meeting has no checks on it at all. The voters don't have a say, really, in who they elect because there aren't competitive elections, and the people that are elected, some of them, don't believe they actually represent the people that don't have a vote in the room. The council has a better check because there will be competitive elections. They, they will have to campaign and issue-driven elections so voters will know where people stand. Town meeting doesn't have any checks. This charter does. The checks are the voters. The voters are extremely important in any government. Unfortunately, in our current government, they don't really have a say. The, Meg talked about the manager is weaker because the department heads have to be appointed by the manager and approved by the council. Well, that's a check on the manager that we don't actually have right now. Making sure the manager's appointments to the department heads are approved by the people seems like a good check to me. So in conclusion. Oh, one other thing. Rank choice voting decreases ranker. Proved by a number of studies because people need that second choice vote from you to get elected. So I believe this charter will improve governance in this town, will improve the ability of all residents to actually participate in their own meaningful way in government. And so I'm going to urge you to vote yes, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Hello, everybody. No, I'm Jerry Weiss. I'm not Leea Rushmeyer, who was advertised. In case you didn't notice. I've been in Amherst since 1980. And I can, I'll tell you a quick story that we were driving around looking for a place to live. We moved from Cleveland, and we drove into Amherst. My wife Jenny said, we're living here. I'm not kidding, that's how it went. That was driving through downtown. Made her say that. I've been on town meetings since 2001. I was on the Select Board from 2004 to 2010. And as you know, I was on the Charter Commission for 18 ruling months. I want to say a few things about the current charter. I hope I'm not repeating anything. First of all, it's not all bad. I hate this idea that we have all bad town meeting or all bad charter. It's not. Town meeting has a lot of great things to recommend it. There are some good parts of this charter that would probably be an improvement. But you have to balance what's good and what's not good. And there's, in my mind, many more things that are not good than there are good. First of all, I operate under the belief that the more people making decisions about the laws that they're going to live under is what you want. Town meeting with 240 people voting on the laws that are going to affect them is better than 13 people voting. A lot is hinging on the experiment, in my mind, an experiment, of voter turnout will make this a robust democracy, more democratic than 240 people. I don't buy it. I'll be the first to say, boy, it's working well, if it does, if we have the charter passed and that voting turns out to be so robust and people are happy. We hear over and over and over that town meeting isn't, doesn't represent the diversity of our town. Absolutely not. It's true. But we do have a huge range of ages, from very odd, in early twenties to 90. We have over 50% women. We have people identified as gay. We have people of color. We have very low-income people. We have renters, we have homeowners. It's hard for me to believe that those 13 people are going to do a better job of representing the diversity of our town than that. I think it'll be impossible. Another problem I have with the charter is that there are no staggered terms. Every two years, voters will vote for all of the councillors, all of the, all of the school committee members, all of the library trustees. I don't think it will happen that the entire government will turn over, but it could. It's built in to allow that. I think that's a problem. I would have liked this better to have had staggered terms. I'm sorry I use the word um too much. We've talked about the vast powers that 13 people will have based on everyone's going to get to vote. The statistics across the state show that the voting in council manager towns is very, not very different from what it is in Amherst. Unfortunately, I didn't print out the stats this morning on my computer, and my phone won't open them. So I'm going on my memory, and I won't give you exacts. When I do quote, I'll say about, and I'll be, I'll be close. It's very close. In the last town meeting election, we had 147 people running for 92 slots. Not bad. That one we have, I had others. Eight out of 10 precincts had competition. The no, no competition was in precinct four, which I believe is primarily students. In the same election, we had a 22% turnout town-wide, which is about what you'll find across the state. However, in the five highest attending precincts, it was almost 30%. The student, the student precincts are extreme, really bring those numbers down. The two primary student precincts were both below 10%. So when you hear stats about turnout, you have to factor in about a 25% discount for the students. So I've talked about that. Another problem I have is the lack of research. We're doing a lot of research now. I wish we had done it all during the commission meetings. Is it working better in council-manager towns? How would we know that? Did we talk to them? Did we look at their stats? Do we look at their budgets? Do we look at their taxes? I don't remember doing any of that. So it's an idea. Maybe council manager is going to be great. But what's the evidence? I'm worried about that. So far, our research shows that the statistics across the state don't, don't support the idea that there'll be better voter turnout, that there'll be more candidates for each seat. It just isn't supported. Money is a problem. Right now, for, when there's a contested Select Board seat or town, or a school committee or library trustees, money has to be spent if it's contested. I know on the Select Board, they seem to range from $2,000 to $5,000. These, these seats are going to be contested, and there's going to be a lot of money thrown around. Is that a bad thing? Not necessarily. But will that mean that people who don't, aren't connected to money will have a poorer chance? I think so. If you're not, you don't have the money or you're not connected to people with the money, I think you're going to have a harder time getting elected to this council. A couple of responses to other points made. The email system, the some, I don't know, 60-something percent.
68.
68, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like it to be higher. I wish it was, and it probably will be. It's only been a year, a year old that we've been doing this. I think it will grow. A possible problem with the combining of precincts into districts is two precincts are now one district. It's possible that you will not have a rep from your precinct. Depends on where the money is and who, what kind of power people have in running. It may or may not happen. But it's possible that some precincts will have no representatives. The contacting of town meeting members, I think it's important. And people know that anybody who ever wrote, wrote to me got an answer. And I know that some people do not respond to emails. Ooh, shame on them. And I think that will grow too. These are all new ideas that we introduced, and it takes time for people to get used to new ideas. One question has to be asked about the process. I agree that a council probably will have different kinds of discussions than town meeting has. Town meeting cannot do a call-in response. You speak, hopefully you speak based on what you're hearing. But then I have to ask, so what's the harm that been done in our town using town meeting? We like living here, most of us, I think, in this room. It's a great town. Wonderful open space, wonderful schools, wonderful diversity, wonderful activities. Yeah, taxes are high. I, I don't hear anything in this charter that's going to lower taxes. They're going to remain high, whichever government we end up with. So yes, it's expensive to live here, but we get a pretty good bang for our buck. So what harm has been done by the process that town meeting uses? I, I don't know. I want to say a word about the schools. I think town meeting made a mistake. I'm going to get yelled at for this later. But I would no sooner throw away an institution that I believe in deeply and I believe has served our town far better than any other form of government. As they say, town meeting is the worst form of government possible except for all the rest. I would no sooner throw away that institution because of one error that I believe was made. I believe it was an error. I know people don't like that word, but you're hearing from me. I wouldn't throw it away because of that. I was angry, I was upset, and I still love town meeting. I just don't, I would no sooner do that than I would tell my son I never want to see him again because of some mistake I think he made. I mean, that's just absurd to me. Rank choice voting, great idea. We all support it. Everybody on the commission supported it.
Do it. Do it anyway. We can defeat the charter and do it.
You can, you can have that without the charter. About the manager's power being taken away, I don't think it's a great idea for the council to be able to overturn the manager's appointments. The manager is a professional. He knows quality people when he or she has studied. People in the council aren't going to know these, these candidates that well. And that, that concerns me. I think that's a flaw. I understand some people think it's good. And I think my time is up. Thank you.
First of all, let's thank all of them. I am a recovering political scientist. I am a recovering political scientist. You can laugh now. So I, I view this in part as things that illustrate things that I have seen in other places. The reason this is being sponsored by the Amherst Democrats is because this is the quintessential political question. How should we be governed? And I would like to ask a couple of questions. And I would like to ask a couple of questions. I'm going to ask one first to the opponents of the charter and then I will then ask a different question to the supporters of the charter. And you will choose whose answers, if you might. Those who know me know that I often introduce things with a longer introduction than some people would like. I call it context. The democratic strategy when Obamacare was being opposed was to not talk about any of its faults, was to say essentially, we like what we have. And so it was left open for the opponents of Obamacare to say, this is all of its faults. This is what's wrong with it. This is what's wrong with it. And there was no real response to most of those comments. And so what you think about it when you do this is you say, do we really want this to be a question which is black and white, one side or the other is the winner? And so for this question, my real issue is, are there things that are wrong with town meeting that are resolvable? Are they caused by town meeting? Are they caused by the moderator? Are they caused by the town manager? Are they caused by the select board? And can they be cured without a charter change?
I'm so happy that you asked that. There's plenty wrong with town meeting. The people who oppose the charter don't all agree on that. I actually started to circulate a petition to this last fall to reduce the...
Step back a little bit.
Oh, they said near the mic. How's that? Is that better? To reduce the size of town meeting. But I withdrew it because I just didn't get it in on time and I didn't have time to organize it. I think I learned a lot on the charter commission and I have huge respect for all of the other charter members and fondness for many. No, fondness for everybody. I'm very fond of Mandy and I want to say something to you. I hope I get a chance to respond as I'm used to about what I said. I think I learned a lot about the charter. There's three or four things that I would change and they can all be changed. One is to make the size smaller because we need to meet later into the year because of the budget process, which really needs to go into June. And there's a concern that town meeting at the size that it is wouldn't be able to get a quorum in June because everybody goes away. That's a lot of other things to say about voters and when can you vote? Not anyway. So I would make it smaller. I would expect people to meet into June. And the problem with the budget is if you don't have all the cherry sheet from the state and you don't have the information, it forces the town to plan in a way that puts pressure on staff and to make tentative theoretical decisions about what might happen when they don't actually have all the information. It's very unsettling. I would have town meeting meet at least four times a year. I would drink more water. I think there have been some enormous changes in town meeting already that are extraordinary. The electronic voting saves time. I think the problem with people not signing up for email is that they didn't notice the email amongst all the spam they get. I know I hadn't and I had to actually go back and look for it. But I think that the email thing has helped. I think that we need to have not different kind of precinct meetings from what we have now, which is like a warrant review where precinct members come and learn about what's on the... Am I still too close? Sorry. How's that? That it should be staffed and it should be something that the whole public comes to if they want to and not just town meeting members to learn about the warrant, but where the town meeting members go, again, a smaller number. I'd be, I know this is really people like when you say you support the schools and I do too. When I go to these anti-charter meetings and I say I supported the school project, it's like, eh, but it's okay. I would cut town meeting, you know, as much as into half. And I pledge to work on that if the charter fails. I really will. I think town meeting should meet at least four times. The problem with meeting too many times a year is that it's burdensome on the staff to prepare the warrant. I think this new committee that's just been set up is going to be fabulous. It's going to function sort of like the finance committee to do homework and research about the longer-term impacts of some of the questions on the warrant article and bring that to town meeting. It isn't that town meeting members can't do that, but it's a smaller body that can do it more efficiently and with more integrity, the way Mandy's described the council. So I think there are things that could be improved, absolutely, and I pledge to work on them. I don't want, you know, if the thing fails. I think, I know there, I had at least twenty people who wanted to work on reducing the size of town meeting, but we just said we didn't have time. I can't see, those are all possible. Reducing the size of town meeting would have to go to the state legislature, but that would be just performa. I could go on about things that could be improved, but definitely could be improved.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to add something to what Meg said about this advisory council. Brookline, which has a representative town meeting and is a town of eighty thousand people and a budget, I think, three times the size of Amherst, is still running and running well. And they have this very vast advisory system within the town meeting body where people serve on committees to study warrant articles, meaning they go to board meetings, committee meetings, and then they present a report to the whole body of town meeting based on what they see as the benefits or costs of such articles. I think that's coming to town meeting. It hasn't been passed yet. Town meeting has to pass it. But I see that as... Oh, we did pass that?
We did pass it.
Oh, wow. You must have been asleep that night. So. It works well in Brookline. I had a long talk with the Brookline town moderator. And it's a model. We should probably spend some time going to their town meeting to see how it runs because they get done in three sessions every spring. So I'd like to see more of that.
Oh, I'm sorry. And these are questions, you're picking who you want to answer them, right? We're not all going to comment.
They'll be picked.
Yes. You're next.
You're next.
Mike.
Not till I start speaking.
Contextualizing.
Should be the same question?
No, well be.
He's the boss now.
The question that I would ask about a small thirteen-member board is simply what is the way in which those normally function, whether it is a town council or any other kind of board. And so I'm going to make a series of statements, which if you don't believe are true, then that's fine, but this is what I have found. Even in nonpartisan elections, they create and support slates, which will... I will face this way and keep the mic near my mouth. So you will have to hear me even though I am not looking at you. Even nonpartisan elections create and support slates, which implies some pre-agreement on one or more issues. We've seen this recently in both school board and library elections. Once a board is seated, the dynamics in small bodies is to emphasize consensus, both as a social pressure among colleagues and to ensure support on issues with appeal to only one or two members. Those with the strongest desire and feelings tend to be accommodated. Third, when consensus is not the rule, a divided, conflict-ridden board is seen as poorly functioning and ripe for defeat at the next election. See, for example, the US Congress. If the question is whether people who make decisions in a council or any other government body are likely to be defeated, the history across all bodies, state level and national level, are that incumbents tend to be reelected. It is clear that that happens at the level of the town meeting, but it's also true for state representatives. It's also true for congressional representatives. So the heart of the argument for a town council is really that the voters will get control and that decisions will be made essentially on the merits with robust discussion within the council. And the question is, do the facts support that and how would you respond?
I feel like Mandy can talk about the structure of the council. I would love to just share my experience working on citizens' campaigns to bring the voice of citizens to decision-makers under a council form of government. So prior to living here in Amherst, my husband and I lived in Baltimore because he was in grad school there and I was the state director of Maryland Berg. And one of the campaigns that I ran was working to get Maryland to become a smoke-free state. The key to that was getting Baltimore City to adopt smoke-free policy because that was kind of the tipping point for state legislation. And so I spent a year running a citizens' campaign to bring that issue to the city council in Baltimore. And I will say that having the ability for myself and the American Cancer Society and the doctors and nurses who were on our campaign to actually go and meet with elected officials, inform them on the issues, and then bring citizen pressure to bear on first reader at the council, on second reader, and then actually run grassroots campaigns to make those elected officials pay attention to us, ultimately led to victory and we won at the city level and at the state level. So I feel like there is a real connection between the voting public and a council. And because of the iterative steps, you can really, I don't know, like run citizens' campaigns under that structure and make them pay attention to you. I don't feel like you can do that effectively in Amherst right now. You either have to recruit people or serve on town meeting or you're kind of hosed.
Okay, so Johanna wanted me to describe the council form as we've proposed it, but I would say, Bob, that I think part of you is right. The goal is to empower the voters in this charter. And that means letting them have information about who they're going to the polls for. And if they know who's running, have a real choice. And I know Jerry mentioned eight out of the ten in the last election precincts had competition. My precinct was precinct five. We had nine people running for eight seats. That's not real competition in my mind. Seven of those nine were automatically on. There is competition for one seat. One seat's better than none, but it's not real competition. And even when there is competition, there's not a lot of issue talking about. So the voters don't have a lot of information. This charter provides ways to get the voters' information. First of all, more elections in November when voters think elections happen. A webpage on the town webpage that every candidate can put a blurb up and link to any other webpage that their candidate profile is at so that you don't need a lot of money. And there is a one-stop shop for voters and residents to go to find out who the candidates are and what they stand for. Slates? I wouldn't have necessarily said the library trustees had a slate in the last election. There were four candidates for two slots and then two candidates for one slot. I thought it was an issues-run campaign. I wouldn't necessarily equate that to a slate. I think issues-run campaigns are good. We saw with that library trustee vote that the two candidates that supported a renovation of the library won. It was run on whether the candidate supported or didn't support a library. The fact that the voters had that information, I think, was positive. Getting a council to there is a good thing, getting the voters to know what the issues are and where their candidates stand or any candidate stands and then going to the polls and saying, hey, I like this candidate's position. That's who I'm going to vote for. That's something we're really missing in town meeting elections right now that is important for the people that are actually enacting the budget, enacting the bylaws. As for the consensus, either social pressure or not, the charter commission, I don't think anyone would agree that the charter commission had consensus. We were quite divided over our eighteen months. But we functioned pretty well, I would say. I mean, it wasn't perfect, but it wasn't dysfunctional. We got our work done. We had deliberative conversations and we had conversations where we changed each other's minds. That's, to me, a functioning body. And we did not have consensus. So I wouldn't say lack of consensus equals dysfunctional or poorly functioning, as you worded it. And, you know, to address the other point, we actually talked about the requirement for consensus needing the social pressure on the charter commission. We did it in the form of the ZBA, which now currently has three members. And the charter actually increases it to five because a ZBA vote needs to be unanimous at this time to start something. And the charter commission felt that that actually created too much social pressure to keep the votes all in line instead of having someone that might not agree be able to vote the way they don't agree. And so we increased it to five so that there isn't as much social pressure because the decision no longer needs to be unanimous. So that's one way that charter actually addresses one of those social pressure issues.
I'll ask one more. I'll ask one more question first to those opposed, and that is, some say the town meeting has a tendency towards a view of town meeting versus the town government. And the defense against that is that it's called democratic oversight. Is this an accurate description? And if it is, is it a fault?
Do you want to start?
I'll start. Over ninety percent of our town meeting warrant articles, no matter who they're brought by, are voted for by town meeting. I don't know exact numbers. It's between ninety and ninety-five percent. So I don't think that's true, that it's town meeting against the government. Sometimes town meeting is against what the government wants, what the town hall wants, and that's a good thing. Town meeting...
I'm just going to get it up. These are the things that town meetings overturn.
Nineteen ninety-nine, town meeting voted for the smoking ban. Select board voted against it. Keep a warm memorial pool open. If it were not for town meeting, it would be closed. Community services budget, the town hall recommended highly against adding any money to community services. Town meeting said, we want more, and they voted for it. And human service agency money as well. We've had a lot of problem with poorly managed student rental properties. Town meeting is what was the driving force behind getting a system, a permit system, that would at least partly address the problem. Sick lead for part-time employees, again, town meeting, not town hall. So it's really important that town meeting has opposed town hall. A recent vote was to rezone the north side of North Pleasant from Brooders to McClellan. If you think about that stretch of property, it's a lot of old colonial homes with a lot of small businesses in them. There's lawyers, doctors, I think there's a dentist. Hairstylist, restaurant, a lot of small businesses and beautiful old colonial homes. It's a really, to me, an important part of our downtown culture. There was an article to rezone that to allow the same kind of zoning that allowed the east side of North Pleasant for the two, you see the two large apartment buildings going up. It would have accomplished that. And that would have allowed anybody who owned... And that would have allowed anybody who owned those colonial homes to tear them down and put up a five-story building. That was, town hall supported it, the planning board supported it, select board supported it, town meeting said no. I don't understand why we would want to give that kind of power to development. I have nothing against development, but let's, let's, let's have a coherent plan in place. Okay, I, I think I'll let Meg.
Just one quick point. I think there's always, in a democracy, going to be people who are less skillful in expressing their objection to something. And sometimes those people become seen as what town meeting is all about. But when you look at the actual votes, as Jerry just outlined, town meeting as a body has really made wise decisions, 90% of the time supporting what was recommended, and really only in those places, cases where the public felt differently from what was people recommended. I think the zero net energy is another example, where I got a number of calls from people who supported that. And I think it's unfortunate when we focus on a few handful of individuals who are less skillful in communicating and say, well, there's town meeting, when it's just good old democracy. People are different. Some people are more skillful than others.
One more, and then it will be open to the, one more, and then it will be open to the floor.
Keep the mic.
I can't do it any closer than this.
That's right. You better.
In any governmental organization, you're going to end up with some specialization. There will be somebody who will specialize in public safety, someone who will do transportation, someone who will be interested in public works, someone who will be interested in real estate. And as a general proposition, others on a board will defer to the person who has expertise and who has been studying an issue. So that while the remainder of the council would be a check on those individuals, for the most part, people do defer to the person with the greatest expertise. And the expertise is generally going to be achieved by a history in that area and contacts with the officials in that area. Is that a benefit or is that a disadvantage in terms of checks and balances? May not be asking the question clearly.
I can take a crack at it. And then, I think, I'd love to hear Mandy Jo's thoughts on it, too. So, my understanding of the question is, in any form of government, there's specialization, and bodies tend to defer to the person who has expertise on an issue. And is that a good thing or a bad thing? I think that there are a lot of aspects to running a government that are pretty common sense. And, for example, the fact that 90% of the articles that come before town meeting are approved is a, is an indication of that. Like, a functioning government, you know, a lot of this stuff is just like, yeah, we should do that. We should, you know. And then I think every now and then, there are hot-button issues. So, you know, the, on the national level, the budget was a hot-button issue. Healthcare reform was a hot-button issue. Right now, at the state level, there are hot-button issues around end-of-life care. You know, in South Hadley, there's a hot-button issue around, what do you do with pot shops? I think our hot-button issues, you know, the schools was definitely a hot-button issue. I think the zero net metering bylaw became a little bit of a hot-button issue. And I think that on those hot-button issues, when public engagement is primed, there tends to be less deference to the person who has expertise on an issue, because the voters are rearing their heads and saying, we're interested in this, here is what we're thinking. And at that point, the public hearings that happen before a council become very important, and, you know, having thoughtful people who you can get to testify and then ask questions of allows everyone on the council to develop base expertise. And, and then I think the community input and the actual, like, citizens making their voices heard also plays a role in that. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but that's, I think, in my experience, working with town councils, that's how it tends to pan out. But I'd be curious to hear what Mandy Jo has on the issue.
I was going to say, you handled that one very well. But, you know, that, that's sort of what I was thinking. You know, there, there's a role for experts in any government. There really is. The council, by meeting year-round, will develop, not necessarily an expertise or any one person an expertise, but will develop a base of knowledge, as Johanna said, that is somewhat absent in town meeting by all of town meeting at this point. There is certainly some members, and a number of members in town meeting, that have various levels of base of knowledge. A council by meeting year-round will have a better base of knowledge for what's going on in our government, and they'll be able to use that and to, to effectively question the experts that either bring the, you know, the, the issues to the council, or if the council has their own issue, when they want information, they'll be able to better effectively question the ones that know even more. But there's a role for the residents, too. And I, I don't think Johanna and I would ever say there isn't. There are residents out there that aren't in government that are experts. And, and there's a role for them to be heard, too. And a council, and the council members should always seek out those individuals, too, not just government officials, but, but residents in town. And, and if it becomes a hot-button issue, those residents in town that have that expertise will probably make their voices known in this town. I can't imagine them just sitting by the wayside. And I, I would expect a counselor to recognize that expertise from those residents, too, and not just official expertise.
It is now time to turn it over to questions. How do I do this?
How are you going to do it, Bob?
Each side could answer this question. Why is it a good idea?
Why, why is it a good idea to have the, those in government paid by the public so that they are subject to open meeting laws and conflict of interest? And to reverse that question, why is it a good idea to have a town meeting where nobody is subject to open meeting laws or conflict of interest?
Anyone want to answer?
I'll talk as to why it's a very good idea and why it's not, you know, and why town meeting fails on that part. We, as a Charter Commission, it was my very, my first experience on the Charter, the Charter Commission was my first experience of really operating under open meeting laws. And it's tough. I mean, you want, you run into a commissioner or a couple commissioners, and you want to talk about what you're thinking about. But if you do that outside of a meeting, then the residents don't know what you talked about. And that's a problem. You know, you, in order for residents to be informed and to be engaged, they need to hear what, what their representatives are actually thinking. And if you're not subject to open meeting law, all of that thinking can happen in private meetings, and that's a problem. You know, we need that thinking, as messy as it can get, in an open meeting that is recorded by Amherst Media or that is noticed, and that is noticed multiple days in advance so that people can show up, that has minutes, that people could read later on. It needs to be there. And we need our officials, who are speaking in favor or against some policy, or some bylaw, or some budget item, to have to admit whether they have a conflict or not. You know, if that item is affecting a zoning or the zoning of a parcel and someone's speaking to rezone it, we need to know if the person speaking to rezone it owns that parcel. And in town meeting, a person speaking in favor of a rezoning doesn't have to disclose that. And certainly, if a person owns that parcel, or the one next to it, or the one behind it, and they're speaking in favor or against the rezoning of that parcel, it should, if, if they don't disclose it, you might think of their speech in a different manner than if it is disclosed, what their personal interest in that parcel is. So, having a government where those issues and those items need disclosed, and where the issues need talked about, not behind closed doors or not in an email discussion. I know Meg many times referenced how hard it was to not have those discussions over email, because so much happens over email now. And to change your thinking and saying, hey, we can't do this over email, because the people deserve to hear and read the discussions, is a change of thinking that is beneficial for government and all.
Anyone else want to respond to that?
I'd like to. I think it's important to point out the open meeting law, how it works. You can't have conversations of a majority of a body, either at one time or, or serially. But on a council of 13, six people could meet privately. On the commission of nine, four people could and did meet privately. We don't know what those discussions were about. That doesn't stop private discussions. It does stop big private discussions. Town meeting would have to have 121 people meet or email each other simultaneously or at once to violate open meeting law. I don't think it's a problem. I was on the select board, and open meeting law was a bear. And I got, I got slapped down by the AG once, when I was new at it. It was, and she said, no harm, no foul, but don't do that. It's, it's so tricky. I don't see it as a, as an advantage to have, to have that. I understand it's certainly not good to have five members of the select board emailing each other on how they're going to vote. So, it does stop that, and it would stop a council from having 13 people from emailing each other on the, on the next move. But just keep the whole, the big picture in mind, how it works.
If we can move on.
I have, I have a question and the microphone. I'm Lois Barber. I've lived in town for 34 years. I absolutely love Amherst. And I'm an environmentalist. I've started Earth Action, an international environment organization. I've been its director for 25 years. So, my question is about the environment. So, I've noticed that Amherst has one of the highest percentages of conservation land of any town or city in the entire United States. And town meeting is primarily, with its very careful deliberations, over 80 years, been responsible for this high level of protecting our environment and making our town so wonderful. So, Johanna, I was interested as an environmentalist, how can you argue with that success? And my second question is, one of the highest, I know this from personal experience, one of the biggest challenges you face as a person who works to protect the environment, whether it's at the local level, or the international level, or the national level, is the influence of money on politics and decision-making. And it's just, it's a huge challenge. You come up against it, whether it's legal money in campaign contributions, or lobbying, or whether it's illegal money in graft and corruption, et cetera. I mean, it's just the biggest problem you face in trying to protect the environment. And I have never seen the influence of money on the 240 people who are town meeting members. And I, my question is, so how can you think that 11 counselors will be even less influenced? 13, sorry. 13 counselors will be even less influenced by the impact of people with money? Thank you.
Can I take this one? So, first of all, thanks so much for all your work protecting our air, water, and open space, Lois. We're kindred spirits in that regard. So, I don't argue with the success of this town protecting conservation land. It's one of the things that I love about living here. I love it, and I think it is, it's reflective of our values as a community as a whole. I think one of the things we love about this town is that almost every neighborhood has a conservation area that you can walk your dog in, or they can go cross-country skiing in. I know for me, that place is Wentworth Farm, behind my house. So, I do not argue with that success. And I actually think that, so, let me say that. The money in politics, I agree, huge, money in politics is a huge problem. And, you know, challenging Citizens United is actually, like, I work with Environment Massachusetts, I also work with Masberg some, and we run really, you know, we have a whole democracy program that's around money and politics. So, you know, Citizens United opened the floodgates to dark money in our elections, and polluters have, you know, they spend millions of dollars influencing our political process and get decision-makers to go their way because of that influence. There's no doubt about it. I do not anticipate big money or kind of powerful special interests being able to exert that kind of power on Amherst and the council for a couple of reasons. The first, do people need a minute to laugh? Because you're welcome to laugh if you feel like you need to laugh. But if you want to hear my reasons, I'd love it if you didn't. The first is that there's a cap on contributions. So, $1,000 is the most that any individual can give. I recognize that that's a lot of money for most of us, but there is a cap. It's $1,000. The second reason that I don't think it will be a problem is because when you look at other towns with councils, it is not the amount of money that influences who wins. To run a campaign in a town like Amherst, you don't need to raise tens of thousands of dollars to buy television ads or newspaper ads. Most of the work in a town our size is neighbor-to-neighbor conversations. So, it's canvassing, it's having some lawn signs, it's having literature. So, you know, it's not, and all of that information, any campaign contributions over $50 are publicly disclosed, with the name of the person associated with it. So, if there's a big developer who gives $500 to a candidate, that's public information. And I actually think in a town like ours, that will cut against that person's viability as a candidate, because we don't want our elections to be influenced by big money. The third reason why I don't think this charter is a huge problem is in five years, we're going to review this sucker if we adopt it. And if it turns out that money influencing the process is a problem, I actually believe that that cuts against the fabric of our town. And then we can implement one of the many proven small donor empowerment programs that has been shown to democratize elections in other places all around the country. Seattle, Washington just adopted small donor empowerment programs. Howard County just adopted it. Washington DC is about to adopt small donor empowerment programs. And it's actually what the democracy movement is building at the local level to try to fight against Citizens United.
Sorry, it's just not true that money won't influence these elections, and we'll get our research to you. Across Massachusetts, council forms of government have always resulted in an influx of money. In the Holyoke Council elections, city council candidates received $11,800 from donations from executives in a company building medical marijuana facility. It's true that there are these small dollar things that are coming, but because of Citizens United, they have to be voluntary. And anytime, so a candidate has to opt in. I'll just remind you that the person who won the state representative seat raised the most money, a lot, some of it not from around here. It's just, we should get you the information, but it's just not true that there won't be an increase in the amount of money, unless Amherst is different from every other place in the state.
Jennifer Page raised more money than Peter Demling, and he won.
I didn't say everybody...
Right, so I just think anecdotal.
Right, but sometimes people raise a lot of money to scare away the competition. I mean, we've seen examples of people who raised money and didn't even have competition.
I just want to say one thing about the protection of open land in Amherst. I believe, I could be wrong a small percent, that every parcel of land that's been protected by town meeting was recommended by town hall. An example of town meetings not against town hall. An example of Town Meeting's not against Town Hall.
So I guess it's my turn. John Fox. All right, now you can hear me. I just drove in from Boston, so I'm sorry I'm late. But the turnpike wasn't as convenient as I thought it would be. I think that something that Mr. Weiss mentioned deserves further elaboration. And that is the future of the Bruegers block. At our, at the meeting of those who thought about the future of the town that was held maybe a month or six weeks ago, maybe a hundred people there overwhelmingly, people said that they wanted to preserve the sense of a small town, of a college town. So I'd like to address this issue of the Bruegers block, because I think there's some concrete evidence of the division between those who are pro-charter, and those who are against the charter. So I'm gonna read a statement, then ask a question.
John, this is not the way to do this question. This is a general discussion, not a particular case.
Okay, well, let me, this is, this is a major distinction between the pro-charter and the...
I'm not gonna debate with you, so make it quick. Ask your question.
All right. So I'll ask, I'll ask the question. Article twenty came before Town Meeting in 2016, in the spring. And it was to rezone the whole Bruegers block, among other things, to allow buildings like One East Pleasant. The motion was made to refer it back to the planning board, and Town Meeting overwhelmingly, by sixty-eight percent, voted to refer it back. Three members of the pro-charter commission voted against the referral, in other words, in favor of the warrant article. The warrant article was presented by Jerry Gudara, a developer in town, and often referred to as the spokesperson for the pro-charter people. And so the pro-charter members of the Town Meeting, Andy Churchill, Irv Rhodes, and you, Ms. Henneke, voted against the referral, which meant that you favored the warrant article that would allow developers to remove that entire area of Bruegers, the block. So the question is, why did you vote in favor of empowering the developers to do that? Thank you.
I'll be happy to answer that question. I voted against referral, because I thought we should have the actual discussion and an actual vote on the rezoning, and not send it back to the planning board where it would die. That doesn't mean I would have voted for it had we actually voted on the article. I did not think we should send it back to the planning board where we would never see the light of day again. And I, I really felt it would never see the light of day. But maybe it's good never to see the light of day. I'm not gonna make an, an argument for or against that. But yeah, I, I knew you were gonna name me, because I know what my vote was. And it was against referral for that reason, that we should have had the discussion and voted. And in terms of whether that means the charter will be for more development, I don't think you can take those votes by some charter commissioners and say suddenly the charter is a pro-development document. To me, it all goes back to the voters. I've used this example many times. If there is a campaign, and that campaign issue comes up of what do you want to see done with that block of North Pleasant Street, and there are people running for council that say, I want five, seven, ten-story buildings on that block, and there are people running for council that say, I don't want it rezoned. I want it to stay the way it is. I like it the way it is. Whoever wins that election, the town will know what the town's residents want. If it's the people that are arguing for ten-story buildings on that block, or five-story buildings on that block, and they win, then that's what the people want. If it's the people arguing to keep it the same and not rezone it, and they win, then that's what the people want. I think right now, in this town, we don't know what the voters and the residents want in any definitive manner. And having those discussions before people go to the polls is vitally important to knowing what this town's residents actually want to see of their downtown. So yes, I voted against referral, because I wanted to vote on the article itself. I couldn't tell you what my vote on that article would have been, but, but that's why. Because we didn't have that vote, and I don't know. But, but it's, it's empowering the voters to have that decision-making authority and say, this is the candidate I support, because their positions on that issue, be it development, be it library, for library trustees, the renovation of the library, is the position I want. And then having people turn out to vote, and showing that that's what it is, that's what this town needs.
Thank you.
The memory of Article twenty, though, there was another huge factor. The way Town Meeting works is that it decides on articles that come that have been considered by one of the boards or the staff. My memory is that Article twenty came without a recommendation from a planning board. And so that was sent back, because it isn't the way Town Meeting operates. It's not a kind of free-ranging, willy-nilly environment in Town Meeting, even though that may be how people feel. Supposedly, everything on the warrant has been carefully considered and recommended. Or sometimes it comes forward without a recommendation, but the reasons are given.
Can I just add one more thing? Or may I? Oh no, I forgot what I was gonna say. Oh God. No, forget it.
I think it is important that this not be about personal attacks.
Alan Rude. There's one word missing here, and every time I see people talking, as you do, this particular item, really, I wonder how much it costed. It went all over town, right? Where did the money come from? I follow the money. Now, the question that I have is, why have we listened tonight to a cross-section of things? And I think there's one word that is missing. I've analyzed this, I have three or four copies of the charter. I discussed with the chair of the Charter Commission what was going on, and how many... This is many times the size of the federal constitution as enacted, as well. Many times bigger. And it seems to me what disguises, and what we've been dealing with, is a highly veiled thing that tells me that six people look at that, that drawing down there. It's entirely naked of citizen power. So what I would ask you is, why are seven people out of the thirteen constituting a majority, all right, going to call the shots in what I think would be a town dictatorship?
So I'll address the, the mailing that Al is holding up. If you want to hold it up again, just so people can recognize it, that would be great. It is, not everybody's seen it. So these, the mailing that Al is holding up is an informational flyer that explains, or attempts to explain to voters, what we have now in terms of our government, and what we would have under the proposed charter. It is a piece that Amherst For All designed to try to take that longer-than-the-Constitution document, and distill it into an infographic. And part of the reason we created this is because we think that this is an issue that the public needs to be educated about. And so we tried to create an educational piece from our perspective. Some people might think it's propaganda. We tried to make it educational, so take a look at it. It cost about fifty cents a piece, and it was funded, about fifty cents a piece, printed at Amherst College, and mailed at Amherst College to more than seven thousand voters in town. And the, the money for that came through the donations of more than a hundred and sixty individuals in Amherst who support this change. The average contribution to our campaign in the fall was seventy dollars. No contribution exceeded two hundred and fifty dollars. There are a lot of people in Amherst who feel it is time to update our government, and move away from occasional government to year-round democracy. And that's who's funding this effort.
James Scott.
I think you turned it on. I think you turned it on. Stowed it up. No?
Just talk.
There we go.
James Scott, question for the charter supporters. Jerry Weiss mentioned the issue of the election of the members occurring every two years, all of them at the same time. My question was, why did you come to this conclusion as opposed to staggered elections? I feel that that gives us, the voters, a greater ability to affect the membership of such a council.
I'll, I'll handle that one. So one of the goals was to increase voter turnout. And doing that made us, we, we moved elections to November in order to do that. There is a state law that prohibits local elections, regular local municipal elections, from taking place in even years, the years that the president and governor are elected. So in order to move elections to November, we had to only hold them every two years. So that prohibited elections every year, which would have, you know, that, that type of election might have enabled keeping the three-year terms that the current charter has, the current government has. We went to two years instead of four, because three years is a long time. Four years is even longer to hold a government position. And, and, you know, I, I know, I don't know whether it's Jerry or Meg, talked about elections every other year, therefore you have less opportunity to vote for a candidate. Well, right now, everyone in the government has a three-year term. Town Meeting members and select board have three-year terms. So you only actually get to vote for a specific Town Meeting member every three years. And this, the proposed charter will be every two, so they're actually up for election more frequently. And the reason was two over four, one was length of term. We were afraid that four years would actually scare away many people from even running, because four years is a long time to commit to be a public official. Two years is a little easier, and so two years, we thought, might encourage more people to run for office, because it's a little more manageable of a chunk of time. We, we felt as a commission that you could see yourself making it through two years, and then re-deciding whether you wanted another two, or whatever. But if it was four, we actually thought four years not only would less people run because of that time commitment, less people would re-up and run for reelection. And therefore, you might actually have more turnover in your government officials, because you might get many more one-term-only officials. That, that is not saying I'm advocating, like, people holding office for twenty years, or anything. But I just want to make that clear. But, but we felt with a four-year term, that more people might stick to one term instead of going that second. So you might actually lose more institutional knowledge with four-year terms than with two-year terms, where people would be able to serve two, four, six, maybe eight, if they're really ambitious, and, and allow for more institutional knowledge to go further.
Could I, could I say something? I want to expand what, what Mandy said. First of all, a majority of Town Meeting members are elected for three-year terms. There are, I don't know how many, two-year and one-year terms. But a majority are three-year. Well, they're, they're in every election. The other thing that I think should be expanded on is what Mandy said is that by law, it's prohibited to voting, for towns to vote in even number of years, which is, which is true. But we spent a fair amount of time discussing on the commission that the town can petition state legislature to allow it. I don't know how hard that is. We, I don't know if we ever did the research to find out is how doable it is. So I don't want, I don't want to say we never really looked into it, because maybe we did. I don't remember. I, I'd like to add one more piece that came into the discussion that some people may have heard. There was a fear among some commission members that if people were voting in the national and state elections...
Even years.
Even-year elections, they would be coming to the polls for the, for voting for president, voting for senators, voting for governor. And they would be uninformed about the town election, and would vote without information. That, that concept concerns me, because in an election, in a charter in which voter turnout is important, and the voter speaking is important, there's also, there was also a push against that by, by some of the majority, saying that we don't want uninformed voters voting. That's a little worrisome, and I'm sure Mandy would like to say something about that.
I would like to respond to that, because, because my memory was that there was a push from some of the minority to not have voting in the even years. And I was actually one of the people that pushed for even-year voting, and to put a preliminary charter out that had it in the even years, to see what the attorney general would say. Because I would much rather have held them in the even years.
I didn't say it was you.
I know you didn't say it was me, but there, I, I believe there were also some minority members that did not want them in even years for the reasons Jerry cited, too. And I just wanted to clarify that.
I think we need to move on to another question. There are at least three disadvantaged groups in this room. I've called mostly on men.
Can't hear you.
I've called mostly on men. I've called mostly on people whose hair looks more like mine. And I've called mostly on people who are sitting in seats. So I prefer to try to be somebody who...
I have a question about why some members of the panel keep on asserting that we don't have a year-round government. The school committee, the select board, the library trustees, and the finance committee, which is an independent committee appointed by the town manager, work year-round, putting together the budgets, setting policy for their various things. They prepare, you know, they do a lot of work all year round. And then they come to Town Meeting in the spring with budgets. You know, we all sit there, and we look at them, and they're very familiar. We ask heads of departments, and, you know, members of the school committee and library trustees questions about it. And that looks to me like year-round. If Town Meeting needs to meet again, the select board can call it into session at any time. Hasn't really done that. So why, why do you keep on claiming Amherst doesn't have a year-round government?
Because Town Meeting only meets twice a year, and they make key decisions that affect everyone in this town. That's why.
Could I just, could I just say one thing about that? We don't have a year-round Town Meeting. We have a year-round government in our town, and it works pretty well. So let's distinguish government from Town Meeting. Town Meeting is a part of that.
So part of our government operates year-round, and part of it doesn't. Great. We do, we have a part-time legislature that only meets twice a year, and many of the members on it are not informed on the key issues before us. Heard lots of people say on the schools' vote that if they had known that we couldn't change that proposal, they might have voted yes to accept thirty-four million dollars in state aid. We heard a lot of people say that if they had known we couldn't get right back in the pipeline, they would have voted yes.
This is going to be the, the last question, then. There will be two-minute summaries if we can, because I still have to clear the chairs and get us out of here by nine.
I'm Zach. I'm a postdoc at UMass. And given the, the three colleges in town, you have a lot of temporary, what I'll call temporary citizens, who are here from ranging between two years, like myself, up into like eight or nine years. And so my question is, how does, for both groups, is how does the current charter, and how does the proposed charter allow for representation of citizens like me?
Anyways, want to take that?
So the proposed charter would cause the district councillors and the at-large councillors would have constituencies. councillors would have constituencies. That's number one. Right now, many of our legislators, town meeting members, the ones that can act to enact things, do not believe they represent anyone but themselves, which means if you're not sitting on town meeting, you are not represented. A district councillor, in order to be elected, would have to represent those that can't sit in the room and vote. And the other reason is the students could run for council. Those two-year terms instead of three fit much better into not just a graduate student life, but also into an undergraduate life. And a campaign could be run. You could go and get your fellow students and other people in your district to vote for you. I think a council government is much more receptive to students mounting a campaign and winning one of those seats, especially with a two-year term.
So that's actually hard to believe. There are students, college students in town meeting now that have been. It's also become a training, you know, kind of a learning place for students. There's someone who's very active now in town government who graduated from UMass, John DeRusso, who was in town meeting as a student. So it's quite, it's not something you could do. It's something students do-do. And it leads toward understanding what's, how the town works. It's, I mean, with all due respect, Mandy, it's actually hard to believe that a student could come here and learn about how town government works, learn that there's an election to, you know, this elite council, mount a campaign, particularly if there's an incumbent, and win. It's on, especially because they wouldn't be familiar with the issues that we've been told, led to believe would be, would be debating the relevant issues of the town. It's actually inconceivable that somebody, I mean, it's technically possible, but it's hard to imagine that a college student could win a seat on the council. And they do sit in town meeting.
Okay. I'm going to have to end the questioning.
Mic on.
Again.
I know. I'm going to rap you about it.
I'm going to have to ask you to end the questioning. I'm going to give them two minutes each to kind of summarize where they are and why they think their position is right. We'll do it again by alternating, but then, I'm afraid, we're going to be done. And if there are a few of you who would like to help me stack the chairs again, that would be nice. Why don't we start with Jerry?
Okay. One more comment about the school vote. While I was very, very upset by what happened, an interesting fact came out, which is that the town meeting vote nearly exactly mirrored the town-wide vote. And when there was a referendum which needed a two-thirds vote, that also did not carry a two-thirds vote on the town. Now, we can debate all those points, but that's an interesting statistic that came out of this vote. And I hold that along with, I'm not happy with the vote. I want to, I just want to say for people who are really considering voting for this charter, how confident are you that money won't influence the elections? How confident are you that the voters that turn out will truly be representing the town in their votes? That whatever the voter turnout is, 20, 25, 30%, probably not much more than that, that really is a mandate for the person being elected to vote for whatever it's going to be, whether it's new zoning downtown? How confident are you that that is really going to work with voters? And how confident are you that the claim that competition is going to increase for council seats is really going to happen? There isn't much evidence of that statewide. So I just want you to consider all the things that are being said are going to make this a great new government. Think about whether you think, you really feel confident that that's going to happen. I don't.
Thank you, Jerry. Mandy, you have two minutes.
The choice before the residents is a choice. The opposition may not want you to think of it that way, but it really is a choice. A choice between what we have now, without a guarantee at all that it would be modified as Ms. Gage indicated early on in tonight's session of the changes she wants to see. We've faced three charter commissions and none of those changes have ever happened. How confident are you that those changes would happen if this charter is voted down? I'll turn Jerry's words on him. It's a choice between what we have now and without changes, because you don't know whether those changes are going to happen. What we have now and what is proposed. Neither way do you get a mayor. You know, the opposition might say, we need that mayoral veto, but you're not getting it with a no vote, and you're not getting it with a yes vote. I would urge everyone to compare the two systems. I truly believe that the system that has been proposed in this charter will better represent the town, the town's residents and their voices than the current system. Jerry mentioned the school vote. If you go down to the precinct level, there was very few precincts in town meeting that actually matched the vote of their precincts and the will of the people in their own precincts. So maybe overall it did, but I can also point to other votes on library votes and on frankly the marijuana votes that didn't match town sentiment. One statistic doesn't make a reality. Empowering the voters right now, they don't have a lot of power because there isn't competition. There aren't issue-driven campaigns, even when there is competition in precincts. The campaigns are not, there aren't campaigns, even if there's 16 people running for eight slots. So you still don't get the information you need to make an informed decision.
Thank you, Mandy.
So that's why it's a better form.
Briefly, one additional comment about the school thing. I was also very upset about how it turned out. I'm very heartbroken to see the level of anger and friendships that have been torn apart. Children, anyone who's had children knows you have a special friendship with your children's parents, ripped apart. And I think we need to start thinking about anger the way we tell our children to think about anger. It's not helpful. And that doesn't mean you should, you know, you may stop being angry and still vote for the charter, but it's really heartbreaking. I've never seen anything quite like it. I want to make a quick comment about what I consider magical thinking about the voter. And again, look at this chart. I just, I have the charter, and I encourage people to look at the high language of the introduction and compare it with what's actually in it. So I'm not even going to turn the page. I'm on the introduction, the preamble, so to speak. So over here, about how the council members will be more accountable, it says, if you don't like what your town meeting representatives have done on your behalf, it's hard to vote them out. Right over here, it says, the charter seeks to promote democracy and development. If voters don't like what their councillors decide, they have the opportunity every two years to vote them out. So it's magical thinking. And why don't we have these issue debates with the select board races? Why are so many, actually, the town meeting elections are more competitive than select board. We will get the research to you that shows how uncompetitive Massachusetts towns and cities of, as I said before, the range of different models. And I just think, it's magical thinking. Voting is a very blunt instrument. Democracy is about a whole hell of a lot more than voting. It's about protecting the minority. The whole Federalist Ten that some of us probably read is about protecting democracy from factions. It's much more than voting. And it seems like every time there's something that needs to be explained in here, it says, well, the voters will have a chance to do it. And the research just doesn't support that.
This has been intense. But that's what it is, right? Here we are, as a town, coming together to debate thoughtfully, respectfully, even when tensions get high and emotions run high. This is democracy. And it's messy. And it's beautiful. And it's definitely the best form of government that we've been able to find. It's going to be a beautiful, messy, vibrant, robust democracy, whether we have town meeting... Sorry, am I too far? It's going to be a beautiful, it's going to be a beautiful, robust, vibrant, engaged, messy democracy, whether we have town meeting or a town council. It's been 80 years since we've updated our government. What was, at least in the legislature, what was Amherst like in 1938? What was it like? We were one-sixth the size. We were much wider. We are now much more diverse, much more complex. And I welcome that diversity. And I think that we need a form of government that makes every person's voice in this town heard. And the fact that 10% of voters right now vote in our town elections, I see as a problem. The fact that 96% of town meeting members who run again get elected, I think is a problem. The fact that most candidates never have to face a competitive election, I think is a problem in terms of how vibrant our democracy is. The charter commission did a lot of work. They had a lot of debate. These folks up here can tell you that. What they came up with is probably not perfect. It's probably not. There are choices and compromises that have to be made. But when we go to the polls on March 27th, there is no like, well, what about this? Or couldn't we have that? It's a bright-line choice. We're going to vote yes if we want to adopt these sensible changes, or we're going to vote no and keep the status quo.
Thank you. I would like to thank our panelists for coming, and I'd appreciate it if you showed your appreciation for them coming.